For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for almost silence. Thank you very much. Please make sure your phones, pagers and such are turned down. Do we have any citizen concerns?
I am self-aware, it's not really a concern, but it's um, my name is Jade Popkin, and I am the Assistant Director for the Camp of Ark of Woodbury. And we are having a 4th of July parade and carnival to support our kids. And we actually wanted to personally invite every one of you to come and join us.
Okay.
Um, I do have the invitations. I am down too, so I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Um, we are a camp for kids with disabilities. And we go from the ages of three all the way to 21 and how many amount. So we would love for you to come and take a look and see what we're all about.
All right.
Thank you.
What was the date again on it, July 4th?
It's Ju- July 3rd is what it's, we have it. We're gonna have July 3rd from 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m.
I'm not sure if I'm in town, but if I am.
And if you can't make it for July 3rd, we would love to have you come out and just take a tour of the camp anytime that you can.
And is that at Morningside Bible?
Yes, Morningside Bible Church. It's 6100 Morningside Avenue.
Okay. And that's where the program is each day?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is anything needed to accept the invitations?
If we have three or more going, we'd have to publish notice.
We can share this.
I got one in the email.
Did you? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other citizen concerns, please? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move.
Motion by Taylor, second by Ung to approve today's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Items three through eight constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three, approval of the minutes of the June 19, 2018 meeting. Four, approval of claims. Five, human resources. A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. B, approval of request to de-authorize a county position. And C, authorization to initiate hiring process. Item six, board administration. Approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcel ending in 006 for July 10 at 4:35 p.m. Item seven, board administration. A, approval of resolution thanking and commending Steve McGroy for his years of service with Woodbury County. Seven, B, approval of resolution thanking and commending Richard Ellison for his years of service with Woodbury County. Item eight, as county treasurer, A, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for initials J, M. Item B, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for initials G, D. C, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Lake Forest. D, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Dream Homes. E, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Lake Forest. F, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Lake Forest. G, approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for initials J, R. Are there any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Taylor to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Item nine, county auditor. Approval of Tyler software financial and real estate conversion project.
Good evening. So what we have before you now is request for approval of the Tyler conversion costs and implementing a new software for our real estate and financial packages. In your homework, you received quite lengthy attachments. And I just wanted to kind of let you know what was in there and how that was organized and address any questions that you might have. The most important part for you probably is the project estimate, which is in the first section. It's two pages of what the implementation cost for this project would be. This involves costs from Tyler technology as well as costs from the IT department that will involve setting up new infrastructure. Then in the background is your Tyler contract, which is a contract with Tyler Technologies for the technology that they're supplying in software. Next will be the work order and inventory section, which is a quote for the cost for an inventory system that would interact with the accounts payable system. And this would be a system that would be applicable to the county engineer's office. Building Services has also expressed some interest in this. I could see a use in the sheriff's office and emergency services as well to keep track of inventory for the county. The next part of the homework is the BECA is the name of the company. There is an extraction cost for all of the data to convert the data from what we're currently using to move it into the new system. Then there's overviews of the different software packages that are included in this just as a reference. So that's kind of how the homework was arranged. I know that we've talked about this off and on at several of the meetings about the need for new software package. And the reason is that we have three different softwares that we're working between the assessor's office, the auditor's office, and the treasurer's office. And it's kind of an accounting nightmare. Dennis and I have to balance every month. And because of the two different softwares, they're not communicating with each other. And we have problems with our audit because of this. We have findings in our audit, which we do have Jeff Peters here from Williamson Company. And we're gonna have him kind of describe what those findings are and how those findings may be eliminated if we were to be on the same software. And then also, we have different software between the assessor, auditor, recorders, and treasurer's office. In that the assessor's offices are currently using Tyler technologies for their real estate. And the rest of the officers, the offices are using solutions. And we have a lot of transfer issues trying to get the data from one software program to the other. We have an excellent IT department that helps out with these transfers. But a lot of times, we'll find something wrong after the fact, and then we have to go through and try to correct everything. Because the time involved here, I just think the biggest benefit is that there's less chance of error and our audit findings would be potentially reduced. Right now, as we've mentioned in the past, we're at high risk for our, with the Department of Justice for our grant management. This software package would allow for a project management feature where we'd be able to better manage those funds. I want to have Jeff come up now and just tell you a few words about how this is gonna affect our audit in the future.
My name's Jeff Peters with Williamson Company, excuse me. This is something that we've been recommending for many, many years. When you handle a transaction more than once, anything, it just opens up, you know, the opportunity for error. And if we can eliminate that, you'll pick up a bunch of efficiency. Currently, the process is very cumbersome, not just from an audit perspective, but to get to those financial statement numbers that we are auditing. And just the fact that we can, you know, you have all of the information to handle at one time. The reconciliations are all there. Dennis has spent hours and I have spent many hours the last two or three years helping get the balances put together, you know, to kind of get everything integrated. I don't know that the audit process is the, should be the primary driving force behind this. The fact that you have a very significant operation and the systems don't really talk to each other, you know. County government when it was designed was, was set up to put some wonderful controls in place. You know, the person, the treasurer collecting money and the auditor spending money, you know, they are very separate. That doesn't mean they should stay separate all the way to the very end, and you need one set of software to do that. And from an audit perspective, the find, there has been a significant finding, a material weakness in internal control because of the process that you go through right now that once fully integrated and fully operational, I don't see how that finding would be relevant again, which probably will help your trans monitoring and some of the other, the headaches that we've been going through the last few years. So, you know, I, we've looked the last couple of years as to what we should be doing and the group sat down over the last 18 months, I think, and took a hard look at what the best way is to go. I don't have a recommendation on the software, but getting to one is critically important. Questions?
I think we know it's been a long time coming.
So I wanted to share some of the things that I can see in this software from the presentations. We've been working on this since around January. We've had Tyler come to the county, give presentations to the, all of the offices that are primarily involved with the different softwares. And it's been very well received. I'd like to give an opportunity for some of the departments to share their thoughts on this also. But before we do that, I wanted to tell you some of the features that we don't currently have that this software does have. In payroll, there's an employee self-service that will, we would be able to upload payroll checks to a self-service where they can receive their paycheck via a self-service internet function. And we also can upload the W dues to that. That's all included in this. We also can have direct deposit for multiple accounts, which currently we only allow one account for direct deposit for payroll. Equipment for an individual can be linked to the personnel within the system. So if an individual has like a laptop or a cellphone or something of that sort that's purchased by the county, it can be linked to that individual and personnel so that we can better keep track of some of those things that people have. In financials, this is a pretty big one. There's ACH for vendors so that we can pay them through ACH instead of sending them checks. I know there's a statistic out there for what it costs to produce a check and mail that. But I'm estimating low, but we probably produce about 100 checks or more per week. So if you just estimated a dollar per check and mailing of that, you know, you're up to $5,200 in savings if you get 100 vendors to sign up for that, 100 a week. Across the board through their software, they have online training called Tyler University. And this is a nationwide company. And they are solely work with the private sector, so, or the public sector, so. They also are gonna provide in-house training so that they'll train some power users to help train the other employees. It's very searchable software. It's kind of similar to Excel. So if you know how to use Excel, you'll adapt to the software real easily. You can export things into usable format like, you can export the documents, the data into Excel documents so that it's workable. You can also automatically export it to a PDF, to an email. Everything's customized by the individual, so department heads can design it as to what they want to see. If they don't want to see everything on there, they can just pull up what is useful for them. And then reports can be scheduled to be automatically sent. Dennis sends out operating statements every month. We actually kill a lot of trees doing that. But there can be an automatic email generated where it just goes to those users electronically. There's a lot of features where you can attach documents. You can attach documents to personnel, real estate. You can attach bank statements to the, to the records, budgets. You can attach things to the budgets. So when you get the budget packet, if a department head wants to put an attachment with that, you can open up an attachment and see something more than just what they type in. And then-
Do you mind if we ask, I don't want to interrupt. Do you mind if we ask questions related to some of those items? So does that mean, and thank you very much for the report, this is very comprehensive. When we're doing our budgeting process, does that mean that we could see things differently than we do right now? We've often talked about the F something or another function. Would that give us more granularity?
Yes, you will no longer be seeing the green screen. No longer black, you know, you're gonna be seeing a screen like similar to an Excel document.
Okay.
And everything will look differently. This is gonna, it's a pretty large project. This will be involved, we'll have to redo the whole general ledger, the accounts. They'll be reformatted to fit with Iowa's standards, which currently we have things that fit and some things don't fit, so.
And could we have access to something like that? So instead of having to ask, what is that? And then Dennis hits F8 and tells us, which seems a little antiquated. Would this move us the ball downfield in that direction?
Yeah, we can give authorities to different individuals based on, based on, you know, what is determined. So that wouldn't be a problem at all.
Okay, thank you.
This is a program that's geared towards government?
Yes.
Not just something that's overlapped and adapted from something else? That you know of, I mean, but it is geared towards government?
Yes.
And inter-
Yes, there's 53 counties in Iowa that use Tyler and, and growing. They've got a lot of large, large prospects. Potawatomi County is one of them. Currently in our real estate software, we use solutions. We're the largest county that uses solutions. And it, they, they do well with the small counties, but a lot of times, we have a lot larger files and it takes a little bit of work to get things done. Tyler's used to working with larger counties. If, if you want to see up on the board here, this is one of the items that we currently don't have. This is called Tyler transparency. And I thought that this would be something that you would be interested in as a board. And this is live. This is actually cities and counties that are using Tyler right now. So these, I'm gonna go to a county so that we can compare apples to apples. So this is, this would be something that could be a link on our website where anyone can go in and see this information. And this is linked directly to the accounts payable and the financial system of Tyler that this county uses. And you can see up here, you've got department, fund, government area. And as you scroll down here, you can see where the spending is. So you can hover on anything and it's gonna tell you the amounts. And you can see 2018 over here, so you can compare past years in a very visible, easy way. So if we go to a fund, or let's go to a department, because department heads might like this. So here you can look at the departments and you can see what that department's spending is. So you can see where the largest department in this would be the commissioners or the board of supervisors and so forth. And you can hover on those. And then you can go down further and you can see more specifics. And most of these are drill down things. You can click on something in here and it's gonna pull up more detail. So now we're pulling up the auditor and you can see what the auditor spends and where their costs are. It's very easy. I've had no training on this. I mean, I just played around with a little bit, and I'm sure there's a lot in here that I don't know about. But you can, you can really see a lot here. And this is good for the public and good for the board and just gives a good overall view of what's going on with the money.
That's great. Sometimes we get questions on claims to different vendors, and this seems to update on an annual basis or whenever it's, it's in real time?
I'm gonna have to check on the timeframe of when that, but it wouldn't be annual. It would be more frequent than that. So those are kind of the across-the-board benefits. Project management for secondary roads and grant management. Project management is really important. And we can assign project numbers to different things. Like if we have a grant that we want to monitor, every time we put that code on there, we can pull a report that will have that information on it. It'll make reporting a lot easier. We had a demonstration at the county engineer's office so that he could look at the work orders and inventory package and the project management. And I think Mark really liked some of the project management features that they would be able to track some of the things that they currently can't track in HTE, like things that may be reimbursed for FEMA that are not really an expense, but FEMA will reimburse for something. There's a way to track that within the system. And then one thing that we don't currently have within the county is the inventory and work order program. Most of the departments I've talked to just keep track of their inventory by using spreadsheets. And the inventory and work order program within Tyler would allow them to keep track of it in the software, and it would interact with the accounts payable. And then this is the Tyler transparency, which we don't currently have. We did have the county attorney, and I don't know that PJ's here, but we did have the county attorney review the contracts. They did come back with a few items that they wanted changed. We presented that to Tyler. Joshua and the county attorneys with Tyler spoke and they made a agreement that the changes that have been made are acceptable to us and to them. So it's been reviewed. Both contracts have been reviewed by the county attorney.
Is that what's in our homework, or?
Pardon me?
Is that, are those reviewed ones in our homework?
No, that's a good question. The points that were reviewed are not in the homework. This, we just had, we worked everything out yesterday. I do have, this is the contract upon approval that can be signed, and these green tabs are the changes that were made if you wanna, if anybody wants to look at it. They're, I mean, really, I can tell you, like, one of them was the limited liability. There was some language changed in there. One of them was pretty minor. They didn't put the state of Iowa. They put the state that you reside in or something, so we added Iowa. One of them involved, they wanted to have a 10% increase in travel expenses, and we eliminated that clause because it was really not necessary. One thing that we did change, and this is not in your contract either, is we have one year of implementation and then a five-year license where the costs will remain consistent for five years, the first five years that we're using, starting July 1st of 2019. And then on year six, we've, we've had them write in that they will, that we have the option to, we have the option to sign up with them with no more than a 5% increase. And then that will remain constant for the following two years. So we're guaranteed kind of an eight-year period where we know we're not gonna exceed more than 5% of the cost that they've currently quoted. So that was written in there for the changes. Those are the primary changes that were made. There was like, I think, five or six items that we had changed.
Sure.
Will this help, doesn't social services or the, was there a sinking sort of issue that this will help with then? And this'll get everyone on the same page regarding that?
CSN, I think, is that what you guys use? And Tyler does have, they have counties that already have a program written to interact with CSN, so yes.
So this would be helpful along those lines? Okay. And-
The part you're talking about, we won't be responsible anymore after July 1st. Albe Sue County, but they are on Tyler. Taylor?
Tyler.
Tyler.
Tyler. Because if we're still fiscal agent, yes, this would help us a lot. But now with us changing fiscal agents, they will have the problem up there. But they are with Tyler, so it does work.
My other questions are, this is really a big deal. There's a lot of great background. Obviously, you all have done a lot of study for a long time, which is commendable all the way around. My only questions relate to costs. With this amount, RFP process or not required, or at the, you know, that threshold, how is it determined this one? And obviously, it's one that's more than 50 counties use, so it's not some outlier, but-
I'll do that. It's not required. And some of the questions, as we went through our discussions, we talked about this not going through the normal budget process, but it was just, it was just a matter that it was time for it to happen. We couldn't very well do an RFP unless we were gonna face the same issue that we've always faced with assessors in different departments, elected officials, is that there are, the two assessors are already on Tyler. So that's why we really didn't look anyplace else. We had the issue, I've been dealing with, HD's been bad mouth since I led the charge to implement it for 20 years ago. But the thing is, is that this was an opportunity that occurred because the assessors are now on the same package. And the treasurer's office has had an open mind about thinking, and we certainly appreciate-
There is no other option other than Tyler if you want to look at the total package for the entire county.
Okay. Mike, could you come up and identify yourself? Speak long.
You know, we've looked at this over the years, and the only other option is Tyler. There are other companies out there, DevNet and a few others, that do not do the entire county. Also, we could do customs, but then that would mean the auditor would have to switch to whatever we decided to do. And I don't think they're gonna do that. So our only option basically is Tyler, so.
This is Mike Clayton County attorney.
I was wondering for a while.
And she did such a good job, I can't really comment much more, except I do know in my office, I'm not saying I can eliminate a position, but we do so much duplicate work because of the split software between Tyler and solutions. Tyler or solutions and HTE. We do double entries on tremendous amount of stuff. And it's just, it causes mistakes when we do that, so.
And really, really an RFP, I mean, we, it's not a want, we need this.
Right.
If we go out and say we're, we have material weakness, we need quotes, you know, we need this. So I think the important thing to communicate to the public beyond the customer service and compatibility aspect of, you know, little tweaks and benefits internally is the fact that it eliminates a lot of human error. And Dennis, are you perfect?
Nope.
Okay. So, you know, no one impacts no one more than Dennis. And just the manual transfer over when we do our own financials, so that's a big deal.
Would you like to hear from some of the other department heads and people involved in this? Because I know a lot of people are here, you know, to-
Raise your hand if you like it.
I think the big thing is the change from platforms, from the AS400 to the Windows-based platform, is that you have so much more functionality with a Windows-based platform. Just like what Michelle was talking about as far as the budget, that just isn't, that capability isn't there in the AS400 platform as far as going to clicking on something and opening that up. That, that just isn't available to you. Through the Windows-based platform, you just have a lot more functionality. When we first started this 20 years ago, the AS400 platform was much more stable. You never had an issue with it going down during that period of time. But the server-based process is much more reliable now than what, than what it was when we started 20 years ago, so. And I know that people who have used it have always talked about they want to get that functionality of being able to operate off Windows. They've always talked about this being very antique type of system that we use. It isn't, it's just a different one, but it's a very efficient, but it doesn't have the functionality that Windows-based servers have.
With that being said, the AS400 is a platform that no server can match as far as speed, stability, and everything else. And John's people have done one outstanding job to tie all of this junk together and make it work, you know? And it's a constant battle. Every other day, they have to fix something that's broken. But that being said, like I said, I'm taking nothing away from the AS400 because it is a fabulous machine and it's served us well for many, many years. And John's people have done outstanding. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't see John raise his hand, so now I'm worried.
He has to take the neutral.
As I tell these guys, I try to be Switzerland here. I try to stay neutral in my observations, try to do what the customer wants. And in this case, the customer's the auditor. Michelle has to be given a lot of credit for what she's done. This has been a big onion with lots of layers to it, and she's peeled them all back. And I think she's, now she understands the complexity of what she's undertaken. I believe it's a positive. She's gotten, she's getting both assessors, the auditor recorder, and the treasurer on the same software platform. And that hasn't been achieved-
That's good news.
Since I've been here, so-
And you're looking for a brand-new channel, aren't you?
Okay. That being said, I know there's a gentleman in the crowd that can attest to this. Conversions are not for the faint of heart. So it's gonna be a lot of work for us. And, you know, we did do a conversion for the, one of the assessors here about a year or two ago. It took a solid year for just that department. So there's gonna be an impact on this department. Just want you to be aware of that. There could be some, the city- There could be some, the city could have a qualm with, with the amount of time we spend on this, and rightfully so. So I want you to be aware of that. Next year, I plan on rebudgeting one of my positions to be a normal rate. I mentioned this to the commission last, last couple of weeks ago, so maybe some consideration for that this year. I know the budget's set, but I think, in all fairness, that should be contemplated. So again, credit to her, credit to Mike, and Pat for his leadership in the auditor's office, so that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michelle is, and if you said this, forgive me, but the DOJ you mentioned has got a problem with some of our current workings. Is this compatible with the DOJ and make them happy?
The audit is what the DOJ is concerned about, and if we can eliminate a couple of those findings in the audit, then that should satisfy the Department of Justice.
You know, budget-wise, what we're currently paying HTE and what is able to fall off? I know it sounded like from the homework that that's a little indeterminate, but in comparison to $139,000 a year, which is a, you know, I'm going to be supportive, I think, but just want to kind of weigh, and then my follow-on is, where's the money coming from and...
The budget, as far as what we currently pay, is unbelievably complex, and I think John can attest to this, is the HTE budget, which is what we're currently using for financials, is billed up out to four different departments, including the city, the county, the comm center, and the, I believe, the city police, something of that sort. And each one of those HTE bills has a whole bunch of different categories. We have looked at it, but it's really going to need to be analyzed a lot closer. But to answer your question, solutions, in fiscal year 18, we paid $37,400 for the real estate package. The part of Tyler that is equal to solutions, they are matching that price. They're giving us the solutions special, and so, so that should be a wash. The HTE cost, I could throw out a number that $30,000 we would save in the long run, and it most likely will be more, but I don't want to estimate too high and then have it drop.
So you think it'll be cost-neutral? Generally speaking, plus or minus some dollars on an annual basis past the implementation? Would that be a fair, other than the overlap of a couple of years, is that...
I think, I think that the features that we are going to gain that we don't currently have are going to cost a little bit more than what we're currently paying. I do think that it's going to end up costing more per year for the features that we're going to be getting with Tyler than we currently pay.
And so, in the impact on the budget, how is that, if we're looking at $462,000 for implementation and...
The $462,000 will be implemented next year. That'll be our CIP with our annual borrowing when we do our CIP projects.
Next year, meaning next fiscal year?
Yes, fiscal year 19, because it'll start during fiscal year 19. They'll start putting it up.
But we're in fiscal year 19, right? We're in fiscal year 19?
18. 19 starts July 1st.
Okay.
So we're there, we're there. So it'll be in next fiscal year, and that's why you wait to borrow the money in May because we do have projects such as this, and other projects come up during the year. The maintenance fee of the $151,000, that'll basically start in fiscal year 20 because the first year is the implementation, so it'll be a small...
25% of that would be required to be paid in fiscal year 19, and then the remainder is fiscal year 20.
But we have that programmed in fiscal year 19 right now, or not?
$25,000? Or is $25,000...
No, 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 the, the whole implementation cost.
No, that's going to be an add-on.
Okay.
But that's not a problem because we can amend our budget, and then we just add that to our borrowing when we get down to that point in May. Now, the maintenance costs will be budgeted actually in WIC, her and John's budget, like they do with our HTE. That'll take effect the bulk of it during fiscal year 20, and that's a guaranteed rate for five years. And after five years, they have a...
No more 5% increase.
No more 5% increase, which is pretty reasonable. But I'd like to reiterate, this is something we do need. It's been needed for quite a few years, and now's the time that we'd like to make the move. Be beneficial to everybody. Also, when we're comparing to other counties, when you have 50 other counties use the same software, same uniform chart accounts, it's a lot easier to make comparisons. So it's a benefit all the way around.
Well, regarding the cost on the bright side, I believe there'll be savings in indirect costs as far as employee time and, and the time you struggle with the current...
Because this affects every office.
I mean, I mean, going forward, after implementation, John, it'll be easier, right? With this?
It'll be different.
Okay. For the record, it was different. Okay.
It's a long process. I think data integrity will be the biggest, biggest...
Yeah, that's, that's the point I was going to make, is it, it's not necessarily going to be different for John because they've got other applications now that they're dealing with, but the thing is, is that the real savings for their department will be all those transfers that we've been trying to get accomplished. We spent over a week looking for a $500,000 error in the valuation last year, and I cite you all sorts of those circumstances that pop up, that we're always relying on John's department to get it done, and they do a very good job of getting it done, but those are things that they won't have to do, but there'll be other things that they, they will have to do as far as managing those applications.
Okay, that's it.
Sorry, John.
I would like to think that this has been vetted all the way around.
We've worked at it.
And we know we need it. Do we have any other questions?
Who's this guy now?
Can you limp up here, Mark, and tell us who?
One of the, one of the good things with this that she mentioned is the project management software. I mean, our department's going to have to adapt and learn new software here, but tracking FEMA projects, and I've done 10 of them, I hope I don't have any more. It'd be nice if I could get to retirement without having another major flood of that nature. But summarizing and capturing all that data is one of the things that the Tyler software offers, an opportunity to do where we can track each disaster. And twice in my tenure here, we've had two disasters ongoing. We had one disaster open and a second one come on. And being able to track those projects through that project management software is something that we can't do right now. It, it does allow us to go back and grab our inventory data and bring that in as far as accounting for the costs of the materials we take out of stock to address disaster work. I think they had a very good manner for handling that in capturing, each FEMA disaster is a separate project, and then being able to use their sub-projects software in there, or their sub-project mechanism in there, to capture each project worksheet that we have to work with. I know we've had some criticism in the past in the audits on the way that the FEMA accounting is done. It's, it's difficult because the initial estimate isn't always where you end up at the end of the project. FEMA pays 75% of the disaster upfront, then we have to complete the work, and we earn what's left out of their original estimate. That's really simplifying all the paperwork that goes into dealing with a flood and accounting for those funds that go through our department. But if we could do something that would help out in tracking that, I know it would make Michelle's life easier and it would make our lives a great deal easier as well.
I move approval of the Tyler software financial and real estate conversion project.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by who? Ung. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, there's two other motions on the...
Oh, there is?
Okay. I'd move to receive and sign the Tyler software service agreement.
Second.
Motion by Ung, second by Potabam. Receive the service agreement.
There are three signatures with the...
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes five to zero.
I'd move to receive and sign the BECA IT and software services agreement.
I will second the motion by Ung. Further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
Thank you.
Item 10, Board Administration, Mr. Butler. Approval to, of transfer to close case management fund.
Okay, a little background on this. Back on July 30th of 2014, it was determined that we'd separate case management from county mental health. To start this up, we did have to transfer money from the county mental health fund of $309,392. We're at the point case management has, you know, disappeared pretty much, it's been transferred over to the Sioux Rivers region, as it has in other counties also. Other counties had the same scenario we have had here. What we're proposing tonight is to clean this account out because it's inactive. We did have low activity where Sioux and Mental Health had some claims, they appealed. They did win those. We still have a few left, so the proposal I'm proposing is on the second page, the financial impact of moving $526,637.99, that's the cash balance, will move $309,392 to the mental health services fund. Fund 110 and Fund 001, general basic, will move $210,245.99 to that fund because that is federal indirect costs that accumulate over the years this has been there, that is reimbursements through, we have a group come in, do studies on our, well, we do federal programs, we do get some indirect costs back. So we'd be moving money back to mental health and also general basic. We will be leaving $7,000 of fund because there's still some cases being appealed. Once those cases are settled, if there's money still left, we'll transfer the balance over to general basic fund. So I guess I'm just asking for motion to transfer the case management fund from the case management fund to the mental health, the $309,392, and the general basic $210,245, and hold $7,000 back for appeals until they're settled.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabam. Further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
Okay, the next item is item 10B. In this case here, we do our annual appropriation. We actually budget by service area, only we go a little deeper when we do our budgets. Certified to state, we certify by service area. We actually go and break it down, the department division, to get a better idea of what public safety is, you know? Each individual, probably sheriff may have 10 departments, auditor may have three or four. We even break it down that far. So what I have included here is appropriation resolution for fiscal year 2019. I did include in this a listing of all what the codes means, say like 001, 0031, what that means back here. There's a sheet there breaking that down, telling you what each department division is. So we are budgeting here $54,519,248, which was certified to the state March 13. This is just breaking it down, giving spending authority so the auditor can write checks starting July 1st.
Move the appropriations resolution for FY19.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Radig, to approve the appropriations resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
Okay, here's a sheet here. Each one of the gentlemen have to sign that. The next item will be the transfers. In this case here, there are several that we do annually, approve them, then we transfer them as we collect taxes, usually on a semi-annual basis or an annual basis. So I guess we start with the first one. These are all different resolutions with different funds. So I'll go through each one here. The first, and I hope they're in order of yours, but I'll give them to you because you have to sign these two. The first one is the annual transfer from general supplemental to general basic. That covers all of our employee benefits that are paid out of general basic, but we levy the tax out of general sub, that amounts to $6,591,370. I guess in these cases, all you're doing is just making a motion to approve the transfer from general sub to general basic in this dollar amount. And I can fill Pat in on the, you know, details before he does the minutes.
Pat, would you like these separate motions?
Separate motions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ung, second by Potabam. Further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
Okay, the next one is from gaming revenues, gaming fund revenues to general basic. We use $300,000 there to offset tax asking to reduce the burden on the taxpayer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ung, second by Radig. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
Next one is low-cost sales tax revenue, moving that to general basic fund. This is one of the improvement projects the board did approve, $15,000 for part-time health and conservation. This 15 covers the cost for this coming fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ung, second by Radig. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
The next one is moving from low-cost sales tax to general basic fund. Actually, it's going to go into sheriff's training center fund to offset the cost for our lease purchase. Instead of using tax askings, we use low-cost sales tax. And as in conjunction for the next five years with the donation made by the sheriff deputies of $40,000, also revenues we had put in there for this current fiscal year. So this will be pretty much the same dollar amount for the next five years. I guess really four and a half because we made two payments already on the training center.
So moved.
Motion by Ung, second by DeWitt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
Next transfer is low-cost sales tax to rural basic fund. This actually covers the Department for Economics like Community Development, an amount of $278,993. This is less than we've done in the last couple of years where we had two departments. So this is lesser dollar amount. Leave before is around $314,000.
So moved.
Motion by Ung, second by DeWitt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
Next one is low-cost sales, low-cost sales tax to rural basic fund. This is a transfer of $36,000, which will cover the soil conservation funding, our share that we actually send money to, the ag extension.
So moved.
Motion by Potabam, second by DeWitt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
We're over half through. It's a little confidence we're getting there. The next one's conservation reserve to debt service fund. This will be the last payment for a road that we actually did out in nature center over a 10-year plan. They actually used revenues from the reserve fund to pay this. It's not tax dollars, so this amounts to the final payment, 107,068.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ung, second by Radig. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
Okay, the next one is tax increment fund revenues to the debt service fund. What this is, covering our TIF bond that we did borrow for the Dogwood Trail and the ag processing plant down there, and also a project on the road for CF. Our first payment will be $241,650.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ung, second by Radig. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
We only have four to go. Rural basic services, secondary roads, basic, this is transferring the minimum levy of $1,100,000, and we do this in semi-annual transfers as we collect the taxes. We do it in December and June for $1,100,000.
So moved.
Motion by Ung, second by DeWitt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
Our next one is rural basic services to the county library fund. We levy this out of rural basic on a per capita basis of the actual towns that participate, or actual townships, they all participate in the county library. There are towns that voted to be in there. You can add them and you can take them out, but in this case, we're levying this on the rural townships out of rural basic in an amount of $143,259.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ung, second by Radig. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass this five to zero.
Okay, second to the last one is general basic fund to the emergency paramedic services fund. This is our share out of general basic for the cost of our new... This is our share out general basic for the cost of our new paramedic services. $121,905.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Aung, second by Radig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero.
And finally, our last one is the rural basic fund transfer to emergency paramedic services, which is levy down townships only. This is $121,905. This will cover expenses for the current fiscal year coming up, fiscal year 19, and this happened every year.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Aung, second by DeWitt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero.
And that is the end.
Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome.
Item 11. Mr. Gleiser. Approval of contract for online permitting services.
Good job on the timeline. Good evening supervisors, David Gleiser, Director of Community Economic Development. So this evening, I'm asking for the board's approval to enter into a three-year agreement with the Schneider Corporation for a software as a service subscription to their e-government permitting solution. As you know, the Schneider Corporation is the software company that owns and operates the Beacon GIS property software platform that the county uses. You've seen a presentation from our Beacon representative, which was a brief overview of the online permitting functions. It's something that I believe will bring more efficiency and better management to the department as it relates to our oversight on permits. In addition to our department, this service or this software has the capability of providing online applications for other departments such as Siouxland District Health with well and septic applications. It could be something that the sheriff's department could use. It's something that secondary roads department could use. And so we see a lot of value of our department, but it does have applicability to other departments as well. And the cost is broken down. It's a three-year agreement. There is a little bit of additional cost upfront for the setup and for the integration of an online payment system. Previous to this current fiscal year, we did not have the ability to accept payments through credit card. We've been working with the treasurer's office and we will soon have credit card payment capabilities. And so that will be integrated in this online permitting function. So folks, when they create their account, they can pay for the permit online. They could do it at 1:00 in the morning on a Sunday, on Christmas if they wanted. And so in addition to the increased accessibility to the department and being able to monitor a permit and its process in real time, it does provide us on the back end a lot of capabilities that we lack right now in terms of data management. So $8,100 is what the hosting fee is per year. And if you sort of look at it, if you break that $8,100 down in an entire year, it's about $22 a day. And I know that, you know, there are more than a few times in a day where someone in the office is trying to track down a permit, trying to track down an old permit, trying to find an old file. And so the time that we spend, you know, going through a filing cabinet where we could just easily just punch it in the computer and pull it up now, in my opinion, is well worth it. $1,500 is the initial setup for the payment integration. $3,000 is what it costs to upload all of our existing data, which is currently on an Excel spreadsheet, and we have some just recently on an access database. I tried to provide the board with an overview of the revenue that the department brings in through permitting and zoning. And for fiscal years 15 through 18, we've averaged 95 building permits per year, both residential, commercial, and ag. And in terms of total revenue that the department generates, which would also include, you know, fees for conditional use permits and rezones and everything that department charges for, we've been averaging roughly $17,834 a year that we bring in in revenue to the county. And so when you look at it in terms of what we're bringing in to the county, this is less than 50% of those total revenues. My proposal for the board this evening is to allow us to use carryover funds from fiscal year 18 to pay for the contract, which will begin July 1, fiscal year 19. We have roughly $8,000 that we've been working for the last six months to save, knowing that we would be able to, if the board allows it, if we could carry it over, we believe that we can scrounge up enough out of fiscal year 19 operating budget to offset that first year. And another proposal that I'm recommending to you tonight is that the board consider allowing our department to use $8,100 in the remaining two fiscal years of the contract, out of the department's revenue, to pay for the yearly maintenance fee.
So we're not looking at cost neutral, but we're gaining quite a bit in efficiency and...
Yes.
Ease of use for the consumer.
It's something that we don't have now, and so there is an increase in cost as of today, but in terms of the overall efficiency and the capabilities from a data management aspect, I think it's worth it.
The customer service side of things for people wanting to use that and be able to buy online is definitely there and...
You know, and it saves people...
It definitely seems cheap after the last contract.
If you live in rural Danbury and you want to build a building, you know, it's a lot of time that you have to drive into Sioux City to come in and fill out an application and give us your payment, or, you know, delay your building project because your check's in the mail. So, you know, this is real time. And the nice thing about it is that it's with a trusted vendor, with the Schneider Corporation, Woodbury County is what they consider a legacy client, so we've been a longtime customer of theirs. And I think that in terms of overall improvement of the information, you know, in the inputs, they'll be able to click their parcel and it'll auto-populate all of their parcel information, so there's less human error for the applicant. And I see a lot of value to that.
Well, after seeing him negotiate free golf, I know he probably did the best he could to get a good price for the county.
I already leave all that. With that, I'd move to allow the director to sign the agreement, allow the use of carryover funds from the CED department for FY 18 to help cover the year one expenses.
Second.
Just one question, as far as the data, is it, are you going to duplicate any of it as a failsafe, or is that posted?
So it's backed up and stored on their servers. I suppose, you know, that's something that we can have a conversation with IT if we want to have a backup off of their backup, but, you know, in terms of security and those sort of things, I guess that's in, that's part of their assurance.
Sure.
Any other question? First of all, motion by Taylor, second by Potabom. Any other questions for Director Gleiser? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
I'd move to allocate, we need another motion, is that correct?
Yes.
To allocate $8,100 annually from revenue generated in FY 19 and 20 by the CED department to cover the annual expenses of permitting for FY 20 and 21.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Aung to...
Do all that.
Do that.
What he said. It worked for Malloy.
We got it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Item 12, secondary roads. Mr. Nera, consideration of three quitclaim deeds to transfer ownership of a vacated county road.
These are the quitclaim deeds for the properties along the county line between Plymouth and Woodbury County. Board took action to vacate these plats three weeks ago, I think it was. The first one is Darren J. Raymond, oh, it's going up to Plymouth County Attorney. This goes to the Krosch family at 38, 3080, 110th Street, Kingsley. I recommend approval of the Krosch family quitclaim deed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Aung. Any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero.
This also requires the signature. The next one is for Gary Jansen of Kingsley, Iowa, vacating another portion of the road.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Aung, second by Taylor. Further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero.
Finally, we have a portion of the road that goes to Ben Pratt, also of Kingsley, Iowa. Recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Aung. Further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero.
Our department will take care of getting these recorded. We'll have copies of the deeds for our own records, and then they're also part of the recording.
Item B. Receiving considered quotes for the paving of intersection of 220th and Old Lakeport Road.
220th Street is the road that we added as a Seal Code project last year. We've had problems up at the intersection of 220th and Old Lakeport Road with an unstable base. We feel our best method of repair here is to put in a concrete fill-in similar to what we do while we have any of our resurfaced or asphalt roads meeting an unpaved road. We'll also be working to improve the base and drainage here. I have bid tabulations. We went out for quotations and received three quotes. We recommend award of the quotes to TJ Harris Construction for $29,562.78.
TR Harris.
Pardon?
He said TJ.
Oh, I'm sorry. TR Harris.
I would move that.
Movement.
Second.
Motion by Potabom, second by Radig. We need to receive these bids first?
We received them in house.
Okay.
I don't know that the board needs a separate motion to do that. This project is under $50,000, so it doesn't require formal bids. Between that $5,000 and $50,000 range, we're eligible to just go out and get quotations from free companies.
We should receive them since they weren't in the backup, though.
If you'd like.
Yeah.
I'll move to receive.
Motion by Radig, second by DeWitt, to receive bids. We'll vote on that first. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And I'm sorry, we had the motion by Potabom, second by Radig, for the award the bid. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have quotes for a new motor grader. The first quotation is from Ziegler Cat. Their quotation, net bid without trade-in, $338,704, less $25,000 trade-in on our existing unit, number 315. Net bid, $313,704. We also requested an alternate bid for a front-mounted push blade for $8,333. Our second bid is from Murphy Tractor. Net bid without trade-in, $311,700. Trade-in for unit 315, $21,000. Net bid with trade-in, $290,700. The alternate push blade that we requested a bid on, $5240. I recommend award of the motor grader bids to Murphy Tractor for $290,700.
I'll move that.
Second. Mark, just curious, what generally happens to the ones that we trade in? Is it private or government use there?
It varies. Cole Knapp is here, he might be able to discuss a little further what his market is, but I've seen some old county machines go to work for contractors. This machine, transmission broke down on it. It's basically, it's basically boneyard and parts material. That's one of the reasons that the trade is lower than what we would normally expect.
Okay, so he doesn't...
Typically, we see the trades on these up in the $50,000 to $55,000 range, depending on how many hours they've got on them. We did an in-depth study last year, and if you're interested, I can email you a copy of that. Our operating costs between Cat and John Deere machines, John Deere actually has an edge on the operating costs that includes parts, repairs, fuel, filters, all of those things that go into making it run. Caterpillar ends up with a slight edge overall if you don't consider the interest value of money when we figure in the ownership cost, which is purchase price less trade. If you consider the time value of that money, the 12 years roughly that we have each motor grader in service, it's just about a push between the two pieces of equipment. What we look at in the motor graders more than probably any other piece of equipment we have, because they're a machine that runs for us virtually 24/7/3/65. They're an important snow-moving piece of equipment, as well as being out there to maintain over 900 miles of granular surfaced roads. Both Murphy and Ziegler have an outstanding track record of supporting us with parts and repair expertise. I hesitate to say there's any other brand out there that supports their machines as well as Cat and Deere do, so we've been very satisfied with both machines in their service. In this case, the lower first cost and, I mean, even with a low trade-in value, we think we'll find good value in the John Deere machine, as with Wood and the Cat, had they been loaded.
Okay. Motion by Radig, second by Aung. That was to accept the quotes.
Accept the bid of Murphy Tractor for $298,700.
Accept the bid for Murphy Tractor. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Item 13, board supervisor, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This is an agenda item authorizing the chairman to sign the MOU. More specifically, it should be with Sioux and Plymouth Counties. It is the best working agreement for FY 19 before the county transfers to Rolling Hills Community Services Region, and it was arrived at... And it was arrived at, I believe, based on a May twenty-ninth meeting with Director Jerry Foxhoven, in which our legal counsel agreed to draft what we felt was the most representative of the agreements within that meeting. Not to go into the whole history here, but just to give three of our positions early on, one, we wanted to levy differently. If you remember, over and above at about eight hundred and thirteen thousand. We realized, DHS said they didn't have time to review the legality of that, and so we went ahead and lowered the levy. So we took that off the table. Number two, the Crisis Center. There has been and there will be disagreement on its disposition, but we basically came to the consensus that if they did not exist as a region by not bringing in another county from Northwest Iowa Care Connections, then they wouldn't have claim to it. If they did, they would. And so that would work itself out. And so we didn't try to put that into the MOU. The only thing that it seemed like there was general agreement upon was a stable budget level. And that was talked about in that meeting. It's a very simple MOU. As the taxpayers' research council stated, it's important to them, it's important to Woodbury County taxpayers. I want to make sure that you understand this timeline. May twenty-ninth is when we met with DHS. June eighth is when this MOU went to Sue and Plymouth Counties. They have had this for eighteen days. We have received no formal communication from either Plymouth or Sue Counties attorneys. We have received a couple of informal hints of what they may be looking for, but nothing has come before us. And we have three business days. Therefore, I believe it's incumbent upon our board to sign this tonight. Conversations with Director Foxhoven, I believe that he would say it is reflective of what was agreed upon in that meeting, no more, no less. We didn't try to put in a lot of different things that were very important and are very important to mental health services here. Just a stable budget. Couple other points and then I'll, I'll yield the floor. It's already been stated that while we couldn't exceed the budget even if we wanted to because of this MOU. First off, this MOU isn't signed. Secondly, by unanimous consent, the budget could be amended. And finally, if there are language changes, so for example, the idea that maybe there's a large case that goes on and that's going to cost more than was original. We're amenable to language changes along those lines. We just haven't had those at this point. I understand this is hearsay, but Sue County may have this on their county board agenda?
Yes, without getting into a full committee report, which Mr. Radig and I can do. I did ask at the Sioux Rivers meeting today where they were at in regards to the MOU. Plymouth County supervisors said the fact that it was binding made it a non-starter to them. There doesn't seem to be initiative to put it up for a vote in the near future. Sue County supervisors said that it is on their agenda for Friday.
So I'd appeal to our colleagues in Sue County. I think it's in their best interest to really do. It's in ours and I believe in Plymouth's. So that is where we're at. And take any questions. Last thing is I have community, I have communicated to Director Foxhoven that we have received no formal rejoinder or language suggestions or changes. And so absent of that, this is our opportunity. And stay tuned if we need to have a special session or close session sometime this week, if that becomes necessary, but here we go.
Further questions for Mr. Taylor? I move approval to authorize the chairman to sign the MOU.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Ung. Further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Mr. Taylor, item B, approve one-time usage of the costs of services billable to the Sioux City, to the city symphony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So I was contacted, a representative from the Sioux City Symphony would like to use the county courthouse for a Saturday evening event for one-time usage in order to showcase the talent here in Sioux City amidst the backdrop of the courthouse. I think this is probably a follow-on from our, our historic gala. And so absent a, maybe a more formal policy, this is for April sixth from four PM until about eleven-thirty PM with a concert in between, seven-thirty to nine at the Orpheum. Or return to the courthouse from nine, again, about eleven-thirty. They would have a gala dinner. Then after the symphony event, as we discussed, that would be the deal. They are agreeable, and this is what I'm asking for tonight, to approve one-time usage with the cost of services billable to the Sioux City Symphony for courthouse security and any other costs incurred with that date set. And again, not trying to open Pandora's box with this being an event center, but I think it's appropriate given the, the nature and the one-time usage.
They're okay with it, not knowing the exact dollar amount? I mean, you'd probably give them a ballpark.
I, I believe that they will be as long as it's reasonable, and I told them that you'd donate that courthouse.
Yes, pardon me?
I, I think that they'll be, they'll be fine as long as it's reasonable.
Well, if we're looking at roughly, what'd you say, roughly three hours? Three to, three and a half, four hours possibly?
It's four until eleven-thirty with a concert in between, so more like six hours. But then there's a, I think in terms of courthouse personnel and anybody else who would come in to support, if they would so request, it'd be one of those where you have to come and come back, you know, so you're probably going to.
Get to work a split shift.
Right. Probably pay for that entire, entire time.
Okay. No, we'd be staffing up for the entire time because, that I can see.
So I would move that unless there's other questions, concerns, thoughts, comments?
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom. Further questions, concerns? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Item fourteen, reports on committee meetings.
So is this specific to the IJR or is that just kind of, are we on all committee meetings?
I'm gonna say it's probably all committee meetings from.
You can start.
So nothing like at the end of a long meeting, a six-page committee report on the IJR. But we'll try to keep it relatively succinct. Give you backup materials. And the crux of it is that we've gone through the last stakeholders meeting in November of twenty-seventeen and went through looking at the traffic counts, the construction impacts from I-29 CF and Seaborne projects, making that difficult, and waited to hear for about six months whether there's a good justification. As I mentioned last time, the traffic alone isn't substantive enough, but there is from an economic development aspect, plus the fact that we spent eighty-two and a half percent of what we ultimately would. And we'll receive no federal, state, or MPO funds if we don't bring it through to completion. Financial impact is on the back and I'll sort of segue into our county engineer with added comments.
Well, one of the things you look at within interchanges are the existing interchanges currently serving the traffic that's out there. The initial counts that were done showed that the airport interchange was going to be operating beyond its capacity at the expected time when this interchange would come online. That traffic model was shown to be an error. The newer traffic model that was done with twenty-sixteen and twenty-seventeen counts showed that while the airport interchange will be heavily used, especially with the impacts of the Seaborne Triumph traffic out there, it won't be at a point where it's at a level of service F, which is operating beyond its capacity. So this does affect looking at another interchange because you're not looking to divert traffic at that point in time when the existing interchanges are, are operating according to capacity. But I think we still have good arguments for the existing development that's going on down there with a new interchange supporting that area and as well as allowing for growth to the area and additional access to all the new housing and subdivisions that are going on on the south side of Sergeant Bluff. So when you look at all of the new traffic impacts that are out there, I think a strong case can still be made for this interchange. I think our project partners also felt the same way at the IJR meeting. The mayors of Sioux City and Sergeant Bluff were both present. They were supportive of continuing the study effort. The Iowa DOT is also supportive of supporting the effort, and all three are interested in paying a portion of the additional cost to bring the study to completion, so.
And Mark, one caveat to that is that DOT hasn't, have they now formally stated that that's their position? Are they still in the wait and see and we'll check?
It's still at the district engineer level. I did not hear back from him yet today.
Okay.
So.
So at least two out of the three, though, have made that financial commitment and stepped forward.
Even the cities still need city council action to make that happen. So within the next two weeks, we should be hearing from all of our project partners, including the Siouxland Initiative, as to whether or not their representatives there express support for continuing and having each of their jurisdictions pay their current share under our current intergovernmental agreement to complete the study. And now we just need that formal action to be approved. Once that's done, McClure Engineering will be preparing a project addendum requesting that we go to the full contract cost of the six hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and nine dollars to complete the study and submit it to Department of Transportation. Where the study would go is that the draft is done. The three interchange locations had no significant environmental, historic, or other impacts, with the exception of the north option would impact the operation of the two rest areas because they're less than a mile apart. To DOT, this wasn't a major impediment because long-term, they plan on taking out the northbound interchange, or rest area soon. They don't have a date for it yet, but the word is soon. And then the southbound rest area is also proposed to go away in their long-term rest area management study. So those are not a fatal flaw in that north location if it, if it's one ultimately selected. But the, the final program or project costs would include preparation of the draft report, doing the required public hearing, and then preparing the final report that would be submitted to Iowa DOT for concurrence. If Iowa DOT concurs and recommends the interchange, it then goes to Federal Highway Administration for approval. This is an additional year of work from where we're at right now. So we'd be looking at this being completed and submitted to DOT June twenty-nineteen, roughly.
Mark, did we fail to mention the initiative too?
Oh, yeah, the Siouxland Initiative. We also are waiting for their concurrence, but they were interested in participating up to their level as well, so.
So I'm very appreciative. Mark was actually at a conference, and I gave him a little bit of language, but the majority of this is his. The reason we wanted to put this before you tonight is that the action required, we're not gonna ask for a motion from the board, but essentially the bottom line upfront is upon receipt of the letters of agreement with the project amendment from our project partners, City of Sioux City, Sergeant Bluff, Siouxland Initiative, and DOT, then we would be the last one. So it's sort of like in Charge In The Machine Gun Nest, everybody says go, and we didn't want to be the ones running out there solo. We wanted everybody to hold hands and jump at the same time. And so the dominos are going to be that once everybody else steps forward, we'll be the last in and then ask for your approval from there.
And we are the contracting authority, so we're the ones that are actually contracting with McClure and their partnership with HDR to, to do the work, so. Ultimately, the, the financial burden is on the board and it's, it was very good. I felt very good that we had our project partners supporting us in on this and, and wanting to see the project to completion. I still believe it's a very good project for, for the county and for this part, that area down there, so.
We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports on committee meetings, please?
Supervisor Radig and I attended Sioux Rivers before this meeting. Also, in regards to the MOU, it was obviously disappointing that it was not considered at the region. Obviously, one of the signature pages is from the governance board. So that was brought up as far as the timeliness. The major item we dealt with, obviously, was the amendment proposed by Woodbury County of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Siouxland Mental Health for operation of their ASC. And that failed with the other two counties opposed. This is an issue where not currently a core service, but in the future is intended to be by legislation. And it's a shame that something that's been built up over the years so well and receives such accreditation and such use already is, is being effectively cut. There was support for seeking out other sources of cost sharing and funding from area hospitals, but numbers had not come back at this point. And so I wonder if it's too little, too late for Siouxland Mental Health. And obviously, they're beginning their next budget year. So already having received a sizable cut, we were not asking for them to be completely made whole or for any sort of a grant like other providers may have realized in the past, but just to have the cut less, be less severe in order to keep up this program that, as we have said before, serves the most vulnerable in our community.
So was there any discussion? My understanding, Unity Point wrote a support letter. Is that?
Yes, just generally as far as the program, but.
So now is the nursing aspect of that, will that be? Will those people be displaced essentially and not have employment? And then if that was to be continued in the future, let's say a year from now or becomes something that a future region looks at, they'd ask to hire them back, is that essentially the process?
Not sure about the hiring back, but they did mention how they will be facing challenges with the staffing of nurses with this decision. They have to make some tough decisions. Representatives from Siouxland Mental Health were there and very vocal in support. Mr. Radig?
You know, I gotta say, that's probably one of the more stressful meetings I've ever had. I know it's, it's just, to me, you know, core services come first, then core plus, then, and juvenile. And, you know, it's just interesting that all of a sudden, things like fiscal responsibility came up, you know, even though the contradiction of just a month ago, how we could spend two thousand dollars on birthday party supplies. It was really frustrating. I felt like we make a, made a good case for restoring a small percentage of funding back to the Crisis and Stabilization Center, which was cut by forty-nine percent, you know, in, in that budget. I was just looking at six hundred and fifty thousand, that would have been a thirty-three percent reduction in their budget still. I, I just think, you know, the importance of the twenty-three hour observation at the Crisis and Stabilization Center is a key to that center's success. As a takeaway, there's kind of a vague commitment to keeping some form of twenty-three hour observation, though that was not defined. It was suggested that they will have meetings on ways to maybe fund it. But like I said, that was all very. that was all very vague. I think it would have been much more secure to have it in the budget, any way, shape, or form, but that's about the gist of it.
I thank you both for sitting through that because it had to be extremely frustrating to have the, have the thought that you were fleshed out and figured out, and now all of a sudden, it's all for naught, so seems a shame.
Well, the governance board chair did mention, didn't want it to be on the agenda, but my response was if this board, if the governance board votes against this, then, you know, we all, I believe, want Siouxland Mental Health to succeed in this area, so it would be all the more reason for, or ammo, so to speak, when you go to a hospital or propose cost sharing, you can say, hey, the governance board didn't fund it. So that was enough to get the vote going, but obviously, it didn't pass. There was discussion about, you know, the MOU and potentially when they reach some sort of arrangement that that would be an obstacle to approving an MOU because the MOU states no changes. So the ball's kind of pushed down the road in some respect.
But the MOU is not signed, so it's not an obstacle, and if everybody agreed, it could be...
You are correct, Amundo.
I don't know, I guess after today's meeting, it just makes me definitely feel secure that we've made the right decision in moving to Rolling Hills. I mean, it's, it almost seems as though there's been maybe some personal issues with Siouxland Mental Health. You know, this wasn't the only thing they're running that has been cut. I mean, some of the other ones they knew about, but this one was brought up kind of at a last-minute meeting. They weren't told about it, and I just feel like restoring 150,000 of it, you know, when we, we have like a 1.6 million reserve at the end of the year, just seemed to make sense.
Situation normal?
Yeah, I guess for that.
I think we've exhausted this point for committee meetings. Do we have any other committee meeting?
I've got one other quick one.
Sure.
So I attended the city council meeting in Sloan, and they talked about their splash pad, which you received a note of thank you, July 5 to the 18, somewhere in that area, the splash pad should be up and running. The other thing that I thought, and I'd like to get a little more information back to the board on this, but if you haven't heard, Brady Worrell is a father of five from Smithland, diagnosed with leukemia, and then the next day, his nephew was diagnosed, Cal, seven years old, with lymphoma. So if you can imagine finding out that news back-to-back in two days' time, and so that community has really rallied, and they call it Team Worrell, and Cal's an aspiring baseball player, he was in Omaha, and there was a Texas Tech pitcher who had battled cancer when he was young, and got wind of the story, and actually paid him a visit, and they met, and just a very, very cool story. So this last Saturday, they were doing the swabbing in order to see who can be identified as far as bone marrow, but I just thought in some small way to bring it back to this board, and then if there's anything that we can do in publicizing either that need or they're standing up a Facebook page and so on, I thought it would be a worthy endeavor, so...
That does bring up, our golf team has been decided, I thought you would all like to know. We have team captain, Melissa. We have Ryan Weber. We have, give me free golf, Gleiser.
You're going from like here, and it just keeps getting worse.
No, because I'm the last one.
And it's you, yeah.
Exactly, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, good luck.
That has been decided. The team is called the County Crushers, so...
Crusher spirit, maybe, but that's another thing.
I have a feeling you're going to play quickly, and then you're going to be watching these guys butt back and forth for a while, so...
Do we have any citizen concerns? Hearing none. Do we have any board concerns?
I guess I just briefly do have a concern on what we were talking about earlier with the region. Worst-case scenario, no MOU is approved, and we've formally withdrawn, otherwise, we obviously couldn't join Rolling Hills. I do question the legitimacy of existing without a agreement, which is required by law. I know we're required to be, to be in Sioux Rivers for the next fiscal year, as far as the opinion of a director, but it's also required to have an agreement, and if we can't agree on an agreement, I don't know what sort of basis we have to...
I think that's the stay tuned part with asking for the director's help. I know the time is closing, but I think it's a reasonable...
Yeah.